The League is a nonpartisan organization. I'm going to read you the rules for tonight. They already have received these rules, I believe, but you haven't. So I'm going to read them to you so you know what they are up against. Except then I forgot my glasses. Okay, so thank you for joining us. Some of you have been here for over an hour and here you are again. So you are really dedicated to democracy and you should be patting yourself on the back because too many people aren't nowadays. So thank you for coming. So the League is a cosponsor along with Clayton AAUW, American Association of University Women, and the library. And we appreciate all of them for organizing this. I already said we're nonpartisan. We don't support or oppose any of these people. In fact, I can't vote for them because I don't live in Clayton. Just now, each candidate has pulled a number to determine the opening speaker speaking order. And they're sitting in that number. One, two, three, four. Closing statements. So they'll give their opening statements, which are a minute and a half, and then at the end, they'll go in reverse order. So Kim will be the first one at the end. Excuse me. During the question and answer portion, I'll alternate who I'm going to call on so everybody doesn't have to feel like they're always first. Some questions I've gotten in advance over the internet from AAUW and others, a few I have gotten tonight from the audience. I don't know if we'll get through all of them, but I'm going to, it'll be up to them actually, really. They get one minute to answer each question. They haven't seen them because we don't want them to be able to prepare in advance. We want them to be thinking on the spot. If you have a question, you can kind of raise your hand or, who's collecting questions? Oh, Martha at the back is collecting questions. If you...
I have extra cards if you need one.
Okay. So if you decide you're compelled to ask something, see Martha. Let's see. Candidates may make rebuttals to statements by other candidates, but no more than twice during the forum. Rebutts are limited to a minute each. And each speaker will be timed and will give everybody a 15-second warning. And here is Carol. Again, you've seen her before. And there's her warning signs and the warning signs and then the end sign, stop. I heard that this forum is being streamed or, does anybody know? It is. Okay. All right. So if you haven't turned off your phone, please do so because you don't want that in the living room of everybody who's watching, right? I also want to remind you not to cheer, heckle, or applaud, not even applaud, because that sort of disrupts the whole flow. So just sit there and be good listeners. Okay. So now we're going to proceed with the opening one and a half-minute statements. And the first person, oh, wait a minute. I should introduce, why don't you all introduce yourselves just quickly? Just your name.
Hi, I'm Jeff Wan.
Ed Miller.
Bridget Billiter.
Kim Trupiano.
Okay. So we're going to start with Jeff and his opening statement.
Well, first, I want to thank the AAUW and the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. I am incredibly grateful to the people of Clayton who have allowed me to serve as their council member over the last four years. I'm an active CPA working in industry, the treasurer of my small HOA, an East Bay native and a Clayton resident for the past 13 years. It's been a great experience meeting and talking to folks around town and doing my best to represent my fellow Claytonians. And while I am just one of five council members, I'm proud to have shepherded quality of life, improvements at Regency and Rialto, improvements to traffic and pedestrian safety around our schools, and helped increase transparency in communication and community engagement. I'm running for reelection to ensure that the council listens to the residents that they represent and to preserve the character and charm of our city. Currently, the biggest challenge the city faces is fiscal sustainability. While I did suggest modest cuts to our latest budget in order to keep it balanced, unfortunately, my ideas did not carry the day and the city moved forward with no reduction to spending. Choosing deficit spending rather than reducing expenditures has exacerbated the problem. If we do not reduce our spending, the only choice remaining will be to raise your taxes. To that, I'm opposed. We need solutions that address our structural issues without increasing the tax burden on our residents. If elected, I hope the people of Clayton will allow me to use my voice to make the changes needed to balance our budget while continuing to provide the services that make Clayton a wonderful place to live and raise a family.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ed Miller.
Good evening. My name is Ed Miller and I'd also like to extend my thanks to the League of Women Voters, the Library Foundation, and the AAUW for hosting this evening and to those of you here in the audience and watching online. Hi, Mom. My family and I have lived here in Clayton for the past 19 years and I currently serve the city as one of your planning commissioners and also as its representative to the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. I'm a financial data engineer at an insurance company and my wife teaches math at Pine Hollow Middle School nearby. We have a three-year-old and my older two attend Clayton Valley Charter High School. Before you tonight are four candidates who all care about Clayton and want to preserve its small-town charm. But caring is not enough by itself. The future of Clayton depends on voters like yourselves choosing the candidates who've already proven that they have the experience, ideas, and character to lead the city through the challenges it currently faces. I've already demonstrated proven leadership as I've been elected as the chairperson or vice chair of every city committee on which I've served. Others here tonight have no prior, some others here tonight have no prior experience serving in any government capacity at all, elected or otherwise, and merely echo the talking points of those of us who have. As you listen this evening, you will have to discern for yourself who can work together as a team with the other members of the council for our mutual success. I trust you will find that I am that person. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Bridget Billiter and I'm running for city council because I was raised by this community and I've spent many of my adult years volunteering in this community. And now I want to give back to this community by representing all of you on the city council. I grew up here. I graduated from Clayton Valley. Both my kids graduated from Clayton Valley. And in fact, my mom was a teacher at Clayton Valley for 35 years. I have a long, longstanding commitment to Clayton. But I also have a day job and that's as a criminal prosecutor for the state. And I think that's relevant to this position for two reasons. One, because I will, you know that every day I'm working to protect public safety. I support our public safety officers and I seek justice for all the residents of Clayton and California. Two, it's an invaluable perspective to have on a city council, someone with government experience as opposed to private sector experience. As an employee of the state for over 20 years, I know the very deep frustrations and difficulties of working in a bureaucracy. And I believe that I also can bring that perspective to look for solutions within that bureaucracy, our smaller bureaucracy of Clayton. So for all those reasons, I'm going to ask for your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Trupiano and I want to thank the sponsors and AAUW and everyone who has participated this evening at home and on Zoom. My husband and I moved to this community nine years ago, probably for many of the same reasons that you did. It's a beautiful community. It's safe. We have great schools and there's wonderful small-town charm. Clayton has been under more and more pressure to grow and develop and we don't have a lot of space and we don't have a lot of resources. And we want to keep the natural beauty of what makes Clayton so special because once it's gone, it's gone. Our current budget is in the red and we have a city right now that, is my microphone? We have a city right now that is spending money on consultants and surveys and additional staff, pushing us even further into the red. I have devoted decades to giving back to the community. I belong to organizations like the East Bay Leadership Council, Seroptimist International, Save Mount Diablo, and I bring that leadership experience to this election. I have an extensive corporate background and decades of financial expertise and I really do believe I can make a difference on this council. Thank you.
Okay. So now that they've introduced themselves to you, I'm going to start with a question set. Some of these questions I've gotten already in advance over the internet and some from tonight. And I'm going to combine several of the ones that I got over the internet because they're kind of redundant. And some of you have already answered this one, but I'm still going to ask it. This is all about you and Clayton. The question, and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Wan. Have you lived in Clayton continuously for the past 10 years? What Clayton-specific organizations, including volunteers, community, and government organizations, have you worked on to help build this community? How long have you been in them and what leadership positions in these organizations have you had? And have you previously or plan to consider in the future contributed content to the group Save Clayton? So I know I gave you a whole bunch of them. You can ask me if you can't remember all of that, but I combined, these are all about Clayton.
Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to hit all those, but that was a lot. First, easy one. Yes, I have lived here continuously for over the past 10 years. I'm a 13-year resident. I moved here when I had small children and they were close to my, my parents live nearby and so that was very helpful. I'm trying to remember. So I am a, I participate in most of my kids' school activities. I have three, well, they used to be young children and now they're, they're growing and so that, that does take a large time demand. I'm also quite, I also have a full-time job. So that is the extent of most of my activities around town. Anything that the kids are doing, I'm also doing. And then the last part was...
Save Clayton.
I'm, I haven't participated in, in the organization. I'm aware of it and I know that they, they do use some of the content that I produce, but that's, that's the limit.
Same questions. You want me to repeat them? Bridget, I'm going to ask you. Do you want me to repeat them?
I think I can cover it. I only have a minute, so. I mentioned already how long I've lived in Clayton. I was born right on the outskirts in Concord. I grew up there. I went away to college. Thank you Clayton AAUW for the very first scholarship to me to go to college. I moved back here 18 years ago and have lived in Clayton for 18 years to raise my family. When my kids were in school, I was the president of the Mount Diablo Parent Faculty Club, Mount Diablo Elementary. I was the vice president of education at the, at the parent faculty club for two years. I ran the school auction. I am currently on the board of the Mount Diablo Education Foundation that supports all our district schools with enrichment programs. And I've spent other hours, years, years as a basketball coach, as a team parent. I step up when I can. My family is a volunteer family. My husband coached baseball for 10 years. We volunteer. And I have never contributed to Save Clayton.
Would you say, would you say your last name again for me?
Billiter. Billiter.
Billiter. Okay. And let me call on Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you. So I moved here in November 2003 from, I came from Los Alamos National Lab out to Lawrence Livermore and then moved up here after I got married. And I immediately joined the HOA and eventually served as its president for a few years up in Dana Ridge. So in 2010, parted ways with my first partner and so I spent 10 months back in Walnut Creek, but my children were still in school during that entire time and I was coming back two, three times a week. So I've been here more or less continuously during that time. Of the contributions I've made building our community, I think the proudest one for me is I was a den leader for PAC 262 and, and served as an assistant scoutmaster for Troop 317. AYSO soccer referee, lots of stuff. CBCA, I joined in January, but I've been volunteering for a while. No donations to Save Clayton.
And finally, Ms. Trupiano.
Yes, my husband and I again moved here in 2013. I haven't lived here continuously for 10 years. We had some, a family situation that called us to visit family for nine months in North Carolina. We came back and we came right back to Clayton because we love it and we adore it. I have given my whole life to giving back to the community. And while some of the organizations that I belong to may seem regional in nature like East Bay Leadership Council and Save Mount Diablo and Seroptimist International, we are helping local women and families and communities right here in Clayton. And I'm a new member of the CBCA and I have a CVV Clayton Valley Village application pending, hoping that I will soon be volunteering for them. And no, I do not contribute to Save Clayton.
Okay. Next question, I'll start with Mr. Miller. This is from Jim Motta and he, Moita Motta. Moita, okay. And he put something on the, the voicemail that was very long and convoluted, so I'm going to read it in a short form. The Marsh Creek specific plan was planned for housing 27 years ago. The urban limit line in Contra Costa County was approved 32 years ago, blocking housing development on 65% of the county's land. When you limit the supply of land close to job centers, you force longer commutes. Where do you stand on the 1995 Clayton-approved Marsh Creek specific plan? That's kind of the background on housing.
Yeah, so I, as a planning commissioner, I've, I've heard from Mr. Moita several times in, or at least twice in the time that I've sat there. And I know that there is family land nearby on Marsh Creek that potentially could be developed if we ran out of space, so to speak, built here. I have an actual specific plan that does not necessarily call for building here more in Clayton, but, and you'll hear a lot more about it later, but I am a fan of moving jobs where the housing availability is. In other words, I'm more of a fan of relocating jobs out of the urban centers where they're so dense and, and putting them in some of the fringe regions like Tracy or Brentwood and so forth so that we can cut people's commutes and there's plenty of room out there. Oakley wants to grow Petaluma Gilroy. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Billiter. Same question about Clayton's specific plan.
Well, I did a lot of watching Clayton City Council meetings and researching, but I, I have to admit, I did not go back to 1995 and read the Marsh Creek specific plan. So my answer will be a little more general. I appreciate that Ed, you know, has been on the planning commission and has talked about it, Mr. Miller, excuse me. But there is a problem and, and I would agree that, you know, possibly moving jobs to where houses are, putting houses out here or putting more residences out here far away from jobs is difficult. We are built out. There's not a lot of space for us to build. But we also want to make sure that we have houses, we have places for our police officers, our firefighters, affordable homes for our teachers so that they can live in our community. We do have jobs here and we want to make sure that we find places where those people have, have a location where they can live.
And finally, Ms. Trupi, no, not finally. Next, Ms. Trupiano.
Kim. Well, I also watched a lot of city council meetings and I too did not go back to 1995, but I think my feeling about housing is that I'd rather see the housing where the jobs and the transportation are rather than the other way around. We are a very small community. We have a beautiful historic downtown. I want to preserve what we have and I'm not looking for, I'm not for that kind of high-density housing in our downtown or, and I don't know enough about the Marsh Creek project to comment on that. But I'd like to see the housing where the jobs and the transportation hubs are. Thank you.
Okay. Question number three, I'm going to start with Ms. Trupiano.
Mr. Wan.
Oh, I'm screwed up on my, checking my list and I screwed up. I'm sorry, Mr. Wan.
Shall I? All right. So I actually, I did go back and read the Marsh Creek specific plan. And that's because it did come before us as a council a few meetings ago when we were looking at development around that area. I will say that while the plan is still operational, it was drafted almost three decades ago and some of the provisions of that plan were right for the time and may not be right now. I think it would be wise to revisit it. I think when, for Mr. Moita's question, it really is speaking about the potential of annexing the land outside of the city limits to come into the city so that that can be developed within the city. And I think that, you know, there may be merit to that. However, you know, that process is quite long. It involves a multi-jurisdictional operation or probably, you know, a multi-year operation as well. Once you get into adjusting with the urban limit line and Lifco, which is the organization that controls that, it, it becomes quite challenging. As a city, that's probably not our highest priority, but it is something that, that would be interesting to explore.
Mr. Wan, since I messed up last time, I'm going to give you number, this question first. Question number three. Do you believe that Clayton should remain a part of the League of California Cities and should Clayton continue to work closely with other cities to strengthen our position on state mandates and issues?
Certainly. I do think that there's a lot of value in these organizations that, you know, have the ability to pull together resources as well as represent cities where they have shared interests. The League of California Cities represents essentially all cities within the state and so they, they try to do their best to represent all cities. Now, I would say that some larger cities, when we talk about Los Angeles or Oakland or San Francisco, they may have different interests than we. And so there will be times where we don't, as a city, agree with the positions taken by an organization that represents all cities. Now, I do think the membership's important. It's, it's, it's something that, that we've been a member for a long time. And so when we look at our spending priorities, that's one of those things that we evaluate.
Mr. Miller.
It's critical that we, in fact, as I begin to talk later tonight about, again, my feelings about housing and, and the right way for the state to be headed in that direction, it's going to be critical for us to have allies that, you know, lobbyists, whatever, you know, we need to basically use things like our relationship with the California League of Cities to build model legislation so that we can come up with a little bit more common sense designs for our legislators instead of things like SB 8910 that sort of abdicate all planning, you know, responsibility. Urban planning just goes out the door. So I'm strongly in favor. It only costs the city $6,000 a year. It's negligible. I thought Mr. Wan had expressed a different opinion in a city council meeting, but I guess I was mistaken.
Ms. Billiter.
Yes, I would agree with, with what has already been said. We are not an island here, even though we're a small town. It's really important that we stay connected with, whether it's all the cities in California or whether it's the regional cities, having a seat at the table is one of the crucial ways that we make our interests known to the region, to the state, and we make sure that the interests of Clayton are protected, whatever they might be. Certainly, we might not agree with the bigger cities, but, but if we're not at the table, if we're not sitting there, we can't let them know our positions. So I would agree, and I also agree, I thought that was one of the budget cuts that was suggested by council member Wan. The $6,000 would be a, be a cut that we could make before we ask for parcel tax, which he talked about in his opening. That was my understanding of the meeting as well.
Ms. Trupiano.
I do absolutely agree that we should be participating and I think it's important to understand what our fellow communities are doing in the state of California. Somebody's alarm is going off. And also to share best practices, to learn from other communities, things that are working and things that are not. And I think that there's a broader perspective to be gained from being a member of that organization. Thank you.
Okay. The next question. Again, I'm combining several questions about civility. So this is a three-part series. And let's see, I'm going to start with Mr. Miller. Do you believe our elected officials have a responsibility to be respectful to other council members, appointed officials, and residents even if they do not agree with their perspective? What have you personally done within Clayton to help heal the political divisions? How would you bring more civility to the city council?
All right. That's a great question. I, I do think that, that all civic officials have a responsibility to conduct their, you know, to their business in public in a civil manner because certainly if they do not, it, it inflames tensions on, on sort of either sides of issues. And so we sort of mimic the, the people that we are watching up on, on, on the stage. So it's best that we do that. As far as what I've done personally to do that, I, I do believe that in personal conversations with people, I've, you know, I'm a centrist myself. And so I believe that I help people see other, the other side's perspective, even if they don't agree with it. I, I think it's very important to help people understand each other because that's, that's a big part of where the divide occurs is, is people aren't really hearing the, the actual message behind it.
Ms. Billiter.
Thank you. I do agree also that it's important to be civil. It's, it's okay to disagree, but you don't have to personally attack anyone. We're never all going to agree. I believe I'm, what I've done for this community, I hope, is running for city council. That's my, that's my hope, is that I can help heal some of the divide and bring people together based on my past knowledge of the city and bringing it into the future. What I do in my job actually is a skill that I will bring to the table because I spend my days doing appellate work, analyzing laws, advising other agencies like DA's offices and things based on what we need to do or how we're going to solve this. And we don't always agree. Sometimes the legislature passes laws that we don't love, but we've worked within them and we, and even if I tell an agency something that they don't like, they know I've heard it all. I've heard their input. I've taken input from all different places and I've made a decision.
Yeah, Ms. Trupiano.
Well, I remember when I first announced my candidacy, people asked me what side I was on. And I said, I'm on the side of the residents of Clayton. That's the side that I'm on. I'm not for partisan politics. I am also very much a centrist and a moderate. And I do think that our civil discourse has actually worsened in the community over the last several years. I'd like to see us talk to each other more. I'd like to see us get off of social media and stop the vitriol. And one of my suggestions is I think we should be having regular town hall meetings where people are coming together to talk to one another, to meet each other. I think we'd be surprised that we have a lot more in common than we have different.
And Mr. Wan.
Can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I address it.
Because it was many parts. Do you believe our elected officials have a responsibility to be respectful to other council members, appointed officials, and residents even if they do not agree with their perspective? What have you personally done within Clayton to help heal the political divisions? How would you bring more civility to the city council?
Yes, I certainly believe that there's a responsibility to behave civilly, not just to the groups that you mentioned, but... but just in general. I think one of the reasons I ran the first time was to show my kids that you can take positive steps to make change. Is that this is, it really does serve as an example for how we behave. I am also, not only do I represent the people of Clayton, but I'm also an advocate. And so I strongly believe in the marketplace of ideas. And when we have policy differences, I'm a firm believer that we should determine what those differences are. And, you know, the best ideas will win over time. How can we be more? It's really just about talking with people. I think the more that we are able to talk, the better it is. And what we need is more engagement, not less. And as we talk with folks, it really does change how people interact. And so that's the way that I would approach it.
I forgot to say to all of you that if you direct a question to one person, I won't do that. I'm going to ask all of them the same question. So this one, I'm not going to say who it was directed to, but it's a follow-up on the question about density in Clayton. So starting with Ms. Bellator. What should the city do when state-mandated density is opposed to local desires?
Well, that's a difficult question, and I think I answered it somewhat in my last answer in that I, we have to look at all the ways that we can deal with these laws coming from Sacramento. We have to take input from everyone. We can't always say, "Well, we're only going to go with this particular outcome because the community wants it," because we still do have to work within the law. But there are always ways to look at and come to a solution. And if, and just because it's not the solution that you might want, if it's a compromise, it still is a valid solution. And just because you don't get the solution that you want doesn't mean that you're not being heard. So if 50% of you want one thing and 50% of you want a different thing, I'll hear you all. But some of you might not be happy with the ultimate decision. But that's what the city council, that's what you elect us to do, to make that decision. And it doesn't mean that we haven't heard you.
Ms. Trupiano.
Could you just repeat the question?
Yeah. Okay, if I can find it, let's see. What should the city do when state-mandated density is opposed to local desires?
Well, and we know that we have had less and less autonomy as a community, just like many small communities all through California. And that mandates, there will be more mandates probably coming down. I think the most important thing is that we have to understand not losing the nature of this community and making sure that we keep what is special about Clayton. I keep hearing that, you know, people are afraid of lawsuits and they don't want to push back. And I feel like there has to be an opportunity for us to maybe join other communities who are talking about pushing back with the state because we just don't want to lose the nature of what we have here to mandates.
Mr. Wong.
I mean, ultimately, it's of critical importance that we're in compliance with the laws. So to the extent that there is a law that even if 100% of the community disagreed with, it's not an option to not be in compliance with the law. That being said, I think, you know, it behooves us to do everything we can to advocate on behalf of the residents, even if, even if those, you know, it's a, even if the laws say that we must do something, it doesn't hurt to try and advocate, and that may take different forms. You know, there are local groups of like-minded cities that join together. I think there's meetings every week. And, you know, they strategize around what are ways to advocate in the legislature. A lot of these battles are not fought at the city level. We don't necessarily have the resources nor the ability to go against Sacramento, so to speak. But they are at the state level. But it is, again, it's of critical importance that we are in compliance. So I would never advocate for anything different.
Thank you. Well, if you're concerned about high-density housing in Clayton, then I'm literally the first person that you should vote for on your ballot. Because while others say they want to keep Clayton the way that it is, I'm the only candidate who, on my website, has articulated any plan of action on the subject. Now, of course, it's too detailed to fit in a one-minute soundbite here. So I recommend that you visit my website, trustedforclayton.com, to read about it. But in short, the state's housing crisis could be quickly solved if the state would use its legislative muscle to move some of that job density out of urban centers to the fringes of the Bay Area, like Tracy, Brentwood, Petaluma, Gilroy, where there's land to build housing. That would cut or reverse commutes, reduce greenhouse gases, speed up our freeways, and reduce transportation spending for the state. It's appealing to both sides of the aisle. In fact, I've actually, I don't know about the other candidates here, but I've actually talked to my state legislators just as a constituent. I don't know if anyone else, but I'm so motivated. And I want us to get that coalition together to push back on the state.
Okay, this one, we'll start with Ms. Trupiano. I'm sorry I keep saying that. How would you help improve the look and safety of Clayton and its maintenance issues? What source of funds would you use to support enhanced landscape maintenance?
Well, I know that this has been a big issue for me and one of my campaign priorities. I just feel like Clayton doesn't look the same way that it used to. And our landscaping and maintenance department needs help. Whatever we're doing now is not working. And I wonder if it's additional resources they need. I've never seen work schedules. I know the citizens of Clayton are wondering when the landscaping and maintenance department is coming to their community. Do they need training? Do we need to do additional outsourcing? Is it, thank you, is it that we're not supporting them properly? I look around and I just feel like Clayton doesn't look the way it used to, even just a few years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Wong.
Yeah, there's certainly been a lack of leadership and accountability within our maintenance area. And one of the things that, as a council member, that I've done over the past several years is ask for a schedule of what is expected to be done. Not detail, but really, maybe at a quarterly basis or a semi-annual, just to show what is being done. That accomplishes two things. It holds, it's a way that all the residents can hold the city accountable. And it fields, one of the most common questions that I get as a council member is, "When is the maintenance of this area going to be done?" These are things that certainly have a schedule. They exist because otherwise the crews wouldn't know where to go or what to do on any given time. But the fact that we're not able to produce it, it really is the first step in understanding what we need to do, is to assess what we're actually doing. And we're not doing that right now. So that would be, I would think, step one.
Ms. Bellator.
Thank you. Yes, I think that maintenance has been a concern. I think there were a lot of reasons that it got behind. I do think, building on Councilmember Wong's answer, that looking into not just only maintenance, but the entire City Hall staff and the way it's being run, and hopefully being able to digitize it and bring it up into the 21st century, I think is that's where my focus is. And that's when I first mentioned about working in a bureaucracy and knowing it's really hard sometimes to turn that ship. But I think actually the city council, in their last budget, they have an operational assessment that Councilman Diaz was asking for in this forum back in 2020. And so I think that's a great start to looking at not just our maintenance issues, but all of city staff, to making sure there's no duplicative efforts. There's not things that take 30 minutes that could take five. Putting things online, looking at all that is the first step to making sure things work more efficiently.
And Mr. Miller.
Well, with all due respect, I think my opponent's thinking on the subject is a bit down in the weeds. Pun definitely intended. With just five maintenance workers, not all of whom are working a full schedule, you can't rotate them around the city fast enough to keep up with the weeds. I mean, they cleared Peacock Creek this weekend. Two weeks from now, there'll be weeds again. And they're not going to get back around in that fast of a schedule. We're not even in rainy season yet, right? So it's easy to stand at a distance and insinuate that people aren't working hard enough. But if you go all undercover boss, and you might find out that it's not as simple as you think it is. So I think we need to think more strategically, less tactically. In the year and a half since Roundup was identified as potentially hazardous, there has got to have been some research, right? I lean into the data. I'm a data engineer. There's got to be some research into alternatives like DiQuod or Finale. You know, Roundup itself is going to be reformulated in 2023. I think we need to look at the data and find a smarter path out of this. Hopefully something that works better than low-flow toilets.
And sticking with you, Mr. Miller. What specific reductions in services or personnel would you recommend to balance the budget? Mr. Miller.
Oh, to me again? All righty, all right.
To you again.
Let's go right ahead. I left my mic on anyway, so that's great. Regarding the budget, yes. So, complex issue. So a better question would be to ask why the city council allowed a structural deficit to grow from 30,000 to 50,000 over the last four years without addressing that hole in the streetlight maintenance district? You know, it could have been right-sized for about a dollar a month per household. You know, you can tell from the budget that's published on the city's website where the exact problems are. But 50,000 of it is the maintenance district that I just mentioned. And the other 80,000 is in the general fund. I work as a financial data engineer, assisting accountants in our finance department to analyze data in the general ledger. So I have the tools and techniques to look at the city's GL similarly and find opportunities for us. I'm certain of it. And we've got a million and a half in ARPA funds available to invest strategically in aging infrastructure to cut our recurring maintenance expenses or purchase technology to increase efficiency. Thank you.
Ms. Bellator.
Thank you. Specific services and personnel that I would cut, it was the question. And I can't say that I would do any of that until we look at, as I mentioned in the last answer, the operational assessment to see what exactly we are spending on at City Hall, what efficiencies we have, what kind of IT support or digitization we can do. Those are the kinds of cuts that we can look at. I think most people in Clayton like the level of services that we have. And they don't necessarily want them cut. So if we're going to look to cut things, that's our first step. And I can't make any promises one way or the other. But again, I make decisions for a living. I look at all the issues, and that's what I would do as a city council person. I'd look at what was in front of us, and I'd discuss it with the city council. I would take input from the community, and then we would go from there.
Ms. Trupiano.
I guess, well, when looking at the budget, I feel like we still have not done our due diligence and gone line item by line item to see where there are opportunities to improve our deficit. I certainly don't think it's the staffing. We already have such a small staff, and we are losing people. We need to probably add more staff. I know we're looking for a finance manager. I think automation is something that we can look at and improve efficiencies that way rather than through staffing.
And Mr. Wong.
Yeah, we can definitely be more efficient. I don't think that we've done nearly the diligence necessary to make the assessment that we're as efficient as possible. The, you know, what Mr. Miller mentions about the lighting. You know, the lighting, yes, it's in a deficit position, but it takes a vote of the residents to approve that. Other, if there's no vote, then it gets backstopped by the general fund. You know, we recently said at a council meeting that it costs us $1,600 a day to run our fountain. It turns out, it doesn't. Without actually knowing information, knowing that, you know, critical information, it's incredibly difficult to make decisions based on things that aren't real. And so really what we need to do is do the assessment, figure out where we can gain efficiencies, and go from there. That, you can't make decisions without good information.
Okay, staying with you, Mr. Wong. I think you all are going to like this question. How will you cast your ballot in this year's election? In person on November 8th, at an early voting location, or absentee by mail-in or Dropbox?
Well, it's become a lot more convenient lately. Everyone gets a mail-in ballot. They got mail today, so you should all get them in the mail shortly. I usually fill mine out and drop it back in the mail within three weeks or so. It's postage-paid, so it becomes very easy now. I know that there have been times where I didn't get to it, and so I had to drop it off on election day, but...
Mr. Miller.
Every year, I have a mail-in ballot, but I fill it out at home with my wife. And then we are happy to, we always hang on to it because we like to drop it off actually at Endeavor Hall every year. So that's how we do it every year.
Ms. Bellator.
Same. I've been absentee-balleted since I went away to college. But I typically fill it out at the last minute and drop it off, not because I want to, but because I waited till the last minute and didn't get it in the mail. Now they let you postmark it on the day of, so that's better. It used to be you had to be there by the election day. So I would drop it at, actually, my polling place wasn't Endeavor Hall. It was St. John's Church. But hopefully I'll get it on this ballot, after I mark my name, hopefully I'll get it in the mail sooner.
Ms. Trupiano.
Well, my husband and I have a tradition of, as soon as we receive all of our election information, we sit down over the course of a couple of weeks. We mostly agree. Sometimes we cancel each other out, but we fill out our ballots. And then we're very traditionalists. We like to go and vote in person. I like my sticker. I know it comes with the mail-in ballots, but I still like the old method of going in and voting in person.
Okay, looking at the clock on the wall, I think we have time for one more question before their closing statements. So this is your last question, but it's a whole bunch of questions about your campaign. And let me start with Ms. Bellator. How is your election campaign being funded and by who, including in-kind donations? Have you made any public mistakes during your campaign? And have you publicly corrected those mistakes? Did you publicly disavow and admonish anyone making misstatements on your behalf?
Well, my donations have just been from friends, coworkers, small donations. I don't have any businesses or anything. You know, it's public record. I think my mom gave me the most money. And I hope I haven't publicly made any mistakes, unless I'm sitting here making one right now. So that's, I suppose that's the answer to the question. And if I do make a mistake, I hope I will apologize and correct it quickly.
Ms. Trupiano.
Well, just like your mom, my parents are also helping me fund my campaign. And I have an excellent treasurer who has a lot of experience, and she's been guiding me literally every step of the way. And I'd say most of my overwhelming donations are just coming from, they're $25 or $50 or $100, just from local people who want to see a fresh face on city council and are cheering me on. Thank you.
Mr. Wong.
I, my campaign this year, as well as my previous campaign, is entirely self-funded. I don't take any donations. I do ask people to share and talk with their friends and neighbors, and so that's the best way to help. And so I've been fortunate enough to be able to do that. And as far as mistakes, I think we all make mistakes. And hopefully, I don't recall any egregious ones. So at this point, I think, if I were to make one, then I'd be glad to take it back.
And Mr. Miller.
If any of you ever think of running for city council, you may think that was the mistake that you made. But that's just, that's just a private. But the thing is that, no, I've funded it mostly myself, but I've been actually overwhelmed by just the outpouring of support from people that I don't even know when I see a donation come in, and I'm like, "Who is that? And why would they be willing to support me?" It really does, it touches me. Don't be afraid, I might show up at your door and thank you because I'd like to meet you. But it's all been my own. And I think that's all I have.
I'd like to meet you. But it's all been my own. And I think that's all I have. Yeah.
Okay, we have a few more questions, but we have no more time because you all have been very patiently sitting here. So if, if the candidates stay afterwards, you might want to grab them and ask them your question if I didn't get to it. So now we're going to have the one and a half minute concluding statements. And we're going to start in reverse order, which means that we're going to start with Ms. Trupiano.
Well, thank you again for everyone who sponsored this and attended. There's a lot at stake in this election. And I don't think it matters whether you've lived in the community for nine years or 39 years. It's about, are you passionate about the community? Do you want to be a voice for its residents? And are you a person of action? That's who I am. I love this community, and I want to protect it now and for its future. I love the nature of this community. And I no longer want us to see us kicking problem, kicking the can down the road on our problems. We have a budget deficit. We do have landscaping and maintenance issues. We have staffing issues. And I want to make sure that we're addressing those. And we're also listening to the residents of this community. I feel like many people that I've talked to feel like they have been left out and let down, and that no one's listening to them anymore. And I want people to feel like they can be reengaged again. And I think that this, we're heading for maybe potentially some tough times. And you have to think about who do you want at the helm? Someone with true corporate and financial expertise to lead us into a brighter future. And I ask for your vote on November 8. Thank you.
Ms. Bellator.
Thank you. And thank you to the League of Women Voters, AAUW, the Library Foundation for hosting us. I think this was a very cordial and informative forum for all of us. There are issues facing our city, there's no doubt. The budget is a big one. Obviously, we talked about housing. But I think one of the biggest challenge that I hope to help us get past is the divisiveness that we talked about, is that we all want what's best for Clayton. And everyone deserves to be heard. But that, again, doesn't mean that everyone is going to get the answer that they always want. We have to be able to compromise. We have to be able to disagree cordially and work together to find the best solution for our community. Because that's why we're here. That's why we do what we do. You elect us to make those hard decisions. Like I said, if half of you want one thing and half of you want the other, that decision is going to disappoint half, half of the people. But that doesn't mean it wasn't the right decision for Clayton and for our community. And that's what you want in your leaders, is to make those decisions after taking input, after listening. And I will listen to anyone who wants to talk to me, and I'll take your input. But then I, I'm the one, or we are the ones on the city council that have to make those hard decisions. And I hope that you will vote for me on November 8th, because I'm willing to do that.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you've now had the opportunity to listen to each of the candidates and decide for yourself who best takes your needs and your considerations to heart. Who can you trust to lead us through the next four years and beyond? Who has the experience, ideas, and commitment to get things done on your behalf? To that, I offer up that I'm the only candidate suggesting any specific plan of action to head off the next large housing project, while still working practically to solve the state's housing crisis. The budget needs fixing, but it's not as dire as some would have you believe. We're not deficit spending. We haven't touched our $5 million reserves yet, and I won't do it under my watch. We are facing a shortfall, but we have about a million and a half dollars in ARPA funds that we can use to help us plan for that future, make strategic infrastructure investments, and replace aging equipment or technology to reduce our maintenance costs and increase efficiency. As a member of the city council, my only goal is that when you hear about my vote on any issue, I want your first thought to be, you know, that makes sense to me. I'll see to it that great ideas win out over egos and agendas. No Team A, no Team B, just Team Clayton. We all win together, and that's how public trust will be restored. Please visit my website, trustedforclayton.com. And I appreciate all of your support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wong.
Living within our means is a simple concept that really should guide all of our actions as a city. Unfortunately, that hasn't been the case lately. We need to bring back a level of fiscal discipline that has led to our healthy reserves over the past several years. Because if we don't, if we continue to deficit spend, building larger and larger shortfalls, then it sets us on a path where the city's only option will be to raise your taxes. And to that, I'm opposed. As just one of five council members, it may seem like the majority will continue to do whatever they want. Then the choice of raising taxes, cutting spending, or both, gets reduced down to just one option. But placing a tax measure on the ballot, that follows a different set of rules. For that to happen, four out of five council members need to be in favor. Clearly, I am not, but I am just one person. To truly prevent a tax measure going forward, we only need to count to two. The city has a lot of work ahead to increase operational efficiency and fiscal discipline. Unless and until that happens, I will not support any revenue measure. I know that Kim Trupiano feels similarly. If elected, Kim and I add up to two, which shuts down the possibility of more taxes. And we can instead shift our focus away from squandering resources with useless surveys and trying to increase taxes. Instead, we could focus on serious discussions about cost savings, efficiencies, and other ways to reduce our overall expenditures, what we should have been doing since I raised this issue back in 2021. Let's all get along is not a plan. Let's heal the divide. It's not a plan. We need to make these changes, or else we will go down this path. Thank you.
So those are your four candidates for only two seats. I think that every one of them is well prepared. And you should be proud of having that choice that you have for only two, though, only two. I just want to say that it takes real courage to run for city council. And I don't know anything about the incivility that's being talked about. But they all seem right here very civil. And I hope you are all very civil because that's what's wrong with our country now, is all this incivility. So as a council member, they have to take sticks and bats if you don't disagree with, if you disagree with what they think. And that is, it's fine to disagree, but not to be personal about it. I speak from experience myself. I also want to say that we have so much on the news about who's going to run the Senate, who's going to be in the Congress. And there's hardly anything about local elections. And yet you all are here because you understand how important the local elections are. They're actually more important in your daily, day life than who's in the Senate or Congress. So it's so important that you were here tonight, and you can tell your friends and neighbors about this. And I understand that it was also streamed or on Facebook or something. Yeah. Okay, it was on Zoom. It was on Zoom. So there's, there's some record of it. The last day to register is October 22.